Right for the Fledge of Allegiance.
Fledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, on your pride, in the physical liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Lemay?
Yes.
Mr. Moran?
Yes.
Mr. Tatsias?
Yes.
Mr. Tully?
Yes.
Mr. Bahu?
Here.
Mr. Espinola?
Here.
Mr. Booton?
Here.
Mr. O'Hair?
Here.
Okay. Yep. Okay, let's get organized. Okay, public, Mr.? Yes. Nobody signed up for public appearances at this particular time? Okay. Scoop. Committee of Communications, I think we have two that, in fact, the superintendent, I'm gonna pass you on a letter and you can review.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you. Okay, next item. Report of our student representative. Ms. Billado, please.
Organizations and Clubs. The Business Professional of America State Leadership Conference was held in Framingham from March 7th through 9th. Students competed in a variety of competitions, including interview skills, advanced interview skills, prepared speech, keyboarding, fundamental word processing, and administrative support team. They also took open events and attended professional workshops and BPA business meetings. During the Saturday evening business meeting, it was noted that at National Conference in Anaheim in May, BPA will have a day of service which will include the Rice Race. Two years ago, former graduated members researched the Rice Race and how Great Lowell might participate. Students took this model and presented it as a workshop at the State Leadership Conference. It was met with rave reviews. Because of the attention, Great Lowell Tech BPA brought to the Rice Race. It will be incorporated in the National Conference as part of a day of service. DECA students from marketing and hotel represented Great Lowell at the Mass DECA State Career Development Conference on March 12th, 13th, and 14th at the Marriott Copley Hotel in Boston, Massachusetts. Jocelyn Cox was awarded top 10 in the state along with a plaque in apparel and accessories and marketing series. She also received an achievement award. Deborah Kamau was awarded the Achievement Award in Marketing Management Series, and Kevin Sheehan was awarded the Achievement Award in Hospitality and Tourism Professional Selling. Congratulations to our DECA competitors. The Skills USA District 4 Conference was held here at Great Lowell Tech last Thursday. Great Lowell made an impressive showing with 32 medals and 22 competitors qualifying for the state competition. Winning gold medals and qualifying for the state conference were Amanda Chin, Commercial Banking, Kayleen LaRose, Cosmetology Under 500 Hours, Rocco Carter, Carpentry, Jason Mayberry, HVACR, Manuela Estevez, Medical Terminology, Megan Mills, Nail Care, Zach Favell, Restaurant Service, Daniel Byrd and Ray Monroe, Web Design Team, Thomas Ayotte, Welding. Winning silver medals and qualifying for the state conference were Angel Ramos, Commercial Banking, Caroline Foster, Advertising Design, Ashton Bradley, CNC Milling Specialist, Neda Owagi, CNC Turning Specialist, Fomason Chantel Von Sac, Computer Programming, Jessica Hike, Customer Service, Leah Zagopoulos, Early Childhood Education, Cynthia Perry, First Aid and CPR, John Sizmanzki, HVACR, Michael Rivera, Medical Math, Matthew Mondazzi, Information Technology Services. Winning bronze medals were Kristen Sylvester, Advertising Design, Diane Hong, CNC Turning Specialist, Andrew Satori, Carpentry, Cody Rousseau, Electronics Technology, Alicia Abreu, Medical Assisting, Mackenzie Shabon, Medical Terminology, Aleah Valesquez and Brian Flores, Mobile Robotics Team, Jolena Rodriguez, Nail Care, Adriana Paquin, Welding Sculpture. State Conference Qualifying Competitor Tyler Foster, Masonry Fourth Place Qualifier. Congratulations to all of our winners. The Robotics Club is gearing up for the 2015 New England Bop Ball Tournament. The tournament will take place at UMass Lowell in Costello Gym, 275 Riverside Street in Lowell on March 28th. Lucas Filetra, Anna Krosowski, Kyle Forsyte, and Michael Atchison will be representing Great Lowell at the tournament. Anime Club will be attending the Anime Boston Convention on April 4th. The convention will be held at Heinz Convention Center. The main focus on Anime Boston has always been Japanese animation and comic. This year, the convention has expanded to include other aspects of Japanese pop culture, J-pop, J-rock, and live-action Japanese media. Great Lowell Drama Club is enthralled to announce their spring production of Alice's Adventures with Poorly Cooked Cafeteria Seafood, a comedic spoof of Lewis Carroll's Alice in Wonderland. Set in a high school, the painfully average Alice must face a detention from the dreaded Mrs. Snoggrass. Desperate to escape her punishment, Alice decides to consume copious amounts of the cafeteria's mystery fish. An imaginative tale ensues as Alice meets the wacky characters in this twisted wonderland. The play will be performed April 9th and 10th, and we would appreciate your support and attendance. The senior class recently visited Fire and Ice and Frog Pond for a class trip and are planning to attend a Red Sox game on April 27th as well. Athletics. The Lady Griffins Girls Basketball Team completed a historic postseason run, advancing to the program's first-ever sectional final appearance. They defeated Douglas High School, Blackstone Valley Technical High School, and Asbet Valley Technical High School on their matchup with defending state champion Milis at Clark University. Despite falling to Milis, the Lady Griffins deserve much congratulations for all their accomplishments. With returning starters Catherine Sweeney, Sidney Olivera, Madison Melendez, and Jaleen Medina, as well as top subs Kylie Booley and Caitlin Horton, the Lady Griffins appear poised for another great season next year. Boys' basketball successfully defeated their state vocational championship with wins over Great Lowell on February 21st and Worcester Tech on February 22nd. After receiving a first-round bye and then defeating Littleton High School, the Griffins made a return to the MIAA sectional semifinal, where they ultimately fell to Uxbridge at WPI. The boys' team also captured a share of the CAC League Championship and had four-league All-Stars: Angelo Pilato, Rami Brown, Mishak Dunn, and Ian Kiramir. Angelo Pilato was also named CAC League MVP. Look for the Griffins to be one of the top teams in the area again next season, led by varsity returners Rami Brown, Mishak Dunn, Ian Kiramir, Aaron Sheehan, Johnny Phillips, Elijah Day, and Ricky Byron. The wrestling team that finished fourth out of 15 teams at the Division II North Sectional Finals and finished 15th out of 45 teams at the Division II State Meet. The top finishers in their respective weight class were Chris Leekus, 4th, Justin Kazlofsky, 5th, and Gage Boulette, 5th. All three qualified for this All-State Meet on February 28th, 2015. Additionally, head coach Tom Cassie was voted by his peers as Coach of the Year for the State Vocational and Division II North Sectional. Congratulations to the following Griffin Swim and Dive athletes who were selected as CAC All-Stars along with assistant coach and dive coach Tara Lynch, as, who was awarded the Assistant Coach of the Year Award. Taylor Jeffrey, 9th grade. Janelle Javier, 9th grade. Jessica Chin, 10th grade. Captain Autumn Codwell, 12th grade. Jean Ray Javier, 10th grade. John Ash, 12th grade. Austin Desmaris, 10th grade. And Captain Evan Mosley, 12th grade. Nearly 600 athletes came out for spring sports on Monday, March 16th, up about 10% from last spring. These students will be competing in baseball, softball, boys lacrosse, girls lacrosse, boys volleyball, tennis, and track and field. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. The interesting thing, all these, all the, most of these things that you were talking about were done after school hours. Again, congratulations for you and tell all those other athletes that we're very proud of them. Thank you. All right. Next item on the agenda. Approval of minutes. February 10th, minutes. Motion by? Mr. Tully, seconded by? Mr. Espinola. A roll call.
Mr. Lemay?
Yes.
Mr. Moran?
Yes.
Mr. Tatsias?
Yes.
Mr. Tully?
Yes.
Mr. Bahu?
Yes.
Mr. Espinola?
Yes.
Mr. Booton?
Yes.
Mr. O'Hair?
Yes. Motion passes. A report of treasure. Okay, motion to approve expenditures for the sum of $8,704,586.79. Motion by Mr. Bahu, seconded by Mr. Tully.
Mr.? Mr. Lemay?
Yes.
Mr. Moran?
Yes.
Mr. Tatsias?
Yes.
Mr. Tully?
Yes.
Mr. Bahu?
Yes.
Mr. Espinola?
Yes.
Mr. Booton?
Yes.
Mr. O'Hair?
Yes. Motion passes. Next item here on the agenda. Report of General Counsel.
The first item, Mr. Chairman?
Yep.
I would suggest that you refer that item to subcommittee to report out to you next meeting.
Okay, we're going to refer the Alternative Energy Subcommittee to the Subcommittee. Motion by Mr. Bahu, seconded by Mr. Booton. Roll call.
Mr. Lemay?
Yes.
Mr. Moran?
Yes.
Mr. Tatsias?
Yes.
Mr. Tully?
Yes.
Mr. Bahu?
Yes.
Mr. Espinola?
Yes.
Mr. Booton?
Yes.
Mr. O'Hair?
Yes.
The second item would be, at the end of the meeting, would be requesting, the attorney would be requesting executive session.
Okay.
And...
Okay, gonna move down to the report for the superintendent. Mr. Superintendent?
Very good, thank you very much. So, I apologize, I have kind of a lengthy report tonight, but there's a lot going on. And the first item is, one that, you just heard a little bit about our DECA students and how well they did. You heard a little bit about our BPA students. I had the privilege this year of attending the BPA conference at the Sheridan Tower in Framingham. For the five kids that participated in that, it was outstanding. I also, on Saturday, had the privilege of going into the Marriott Boston Copley and watching the students who are with us here today at their awards ceremony, a very, most impressive state competition. Twenty-five, I believe it was 2,500 kids that were participating from schools all across the Commonwealth, not just vocational schools, regular high schools as well. And our kids, as you're gonna see, they're gonna do a presentation for you, but you can, you're gonna see the, how well they reflected on the successes of our school. So, without any further ado, I'd like to introduce, their two advisors are here, our marketing teachers are here, Ms. Ready and Mr. Griffin, along with the students who participated in state, I believe there were, were 36 kids that participated in districts? And then, these were the kids that qualified to go to the states and spend those three days at the, at the Boston Marriott. But I'll let them tell you a little bit about DECA. Welcome.
Hello, everybody. I'd like to start by saying my name is Evan Mosley. I am a senior, and I have been a member of DECA for three years. My competitive event in DECA is SEM, that is short for Sports and Entertainment Management. Now, I would like to start by explaining to you all what the definition of DECA is. I will read it off to you now. The DECA program is an international co-curricular organization in which students gain real learning experiences within the educational setting. Now, I know you may be wondering what that means. And what DECA is, is it's a competition between marketing and hotel students, where we will go out, beginning in district level, and we will compete against other students through interviews. These are professional interviews, so we dress in professional attire, just like we do now, and we will sit in front of a judge. The judge will grade us, along with, we will take a test, and the tests will be mashed up together. The top seven finalists will get to travel to states. States is held in Boston, as Superintendent Bourgeois said, because he got to witness the awards ceremony, and from there, those top seven get to go to the internationals. Standing in this room now, we have one member from DECA, which has actually competed in nationals, they competed last year, and one other member who was actually unavailable to be here tonight. Now, DECA, for me, has done a lot, and it's done a lot for the fellow students as well. It helps relate to what we learn in shop and in theory. A lot of what we study is based off of what DECA has, what DECA is about, about going out there, being professional, being interviewed, and getting a job. It's very important that these two link together, because we want to show our professional experience, and after our four years, we want to be able to excel at what we do. Now, myself and the other students included have all been accepted to multiple colleges, and this is very, very helpful, because DECA has allowed us to show our shining colors and what we were, what we are talented at, and it helps us to be prepared for what college is about, which is studying, learning, and DECA is all about studying and learning and competing. That's what matters. Now, I myself have been accepted to Bryant University in Johnson and Wales. I would be hoping to attend Bryant University in the fall next year. DECA, for me, has helped teach me leadership, abilities that I have carried on into multiple sports, I myself being a cross-country, swim and dive, and track and field athlete, two of those which I have been a captain of, and my internship within the school is at the Marketing Education Mall stores. Now, I would like to carry on to these fellow students next to me as they tell you where they will be attending school, their names, and their grades.
Hi, I'm, sorry. Hi, my name is Deborah Kamau, and I'm a senior here at Great Lowell Tech. I've competed in DECA for three years now. I competed in the Marketing Management Series event, and due to that participation, I've been accepted to various colleges, including the University of Massachusetts Lowell, University of Massachusetts Amherst, Wentworth University, Wentworth Institute of Technology, Rochester Institute of Technology, and the State University of New York at Buffalo.
Hi, my name is Sierra Roberts. I'm a senior in Hospitality Management here at Great Lowell. I have competed in DECA for three years, and my event was Hospitality and Tourism Operations Research Event.
Hi, my name is Jocelyn Cox. I'm a senior here at Great Lowell Tech, enrolled in the Marketing Education Program, and I have been a second member for three years now, competing in the Apparel and Accessories Marketing Series event. The colleges that I have been accepted to include Fitchburg State and Johnson and Wales University, and those are the two that I'm deciding on right now.
Hi, my name is Kevin Sheehan. I'm a senior at Great Lowell Technical High School. I competed in HTPS, which is Hospitality and Tourism Professional Selling. I got accepted to three colleges: Middlesex Uni, Middlesex Community College, Johnson and Wales University, Salem State, and my choice would be Salem State, and I'm gonna go there for business.
Hi. My name is Kayla Gohansky. I'm a senior here at Great Lowell in the Marketing Education Program. I have been in DECA for the past three years now, competing in the Business Services event, and I've been accepted to numerous amount of colleges, including Springfield College, University of New Hampshire, and Franklin Pierce University.
Hi, I'm Tiffany Dan. I'm a senior. I've been a DECA member for three years. I competed in Human Resource Management. I've been accepted to Johnson and Wales University, and I actually received a scholarship because of DECA. And so, today, we're gonna be showing you a video. They played a video at the state's conference. They played a video at the state's conference, and it inspired me to create a DECA recruitment video to encourage other students to join DECA at Great Lowell Tech.
Congratulations.
Now, I just wanna say, your presentation was fabulous. Every one of yous looked great.
Thank you.
More important, you look like you were having a great time, too. Mr. Bahu?
We know a lot of work goes into your academics and your hard work here at Great Lowell, and you make us shine, you, as you guys are students, to make us the school committee and the administration. You breathe life into everything that's going on here, and you take it, and you, and you can prove yourselves just by being yourself. So, thank you for all your hard work, a great presentation, and I'm proud to be a member of this school committee.
Thank you very much.
Good luck in college.
Good luck in university.
All do well. Okay, we got a pool of donations.
Yep. Thank you very much. Next item on the agenda is an approval for a donation for some cosmetology department supplies. I think of the amount, $929.50 of the donation. There's some backup information in the report.
Okay. Motion by Mr. Booton, seconded by Mr. Moran, seconded by Mr. Moran.
Mr. Lemay?
Yes.
Mr. Moran?
Yes.
Mr. Tatsias?
Yes.
Mr. Tully?
Yes.
Mr. Bahu?
Yes.
Mr. Espinola?
Yes.
Mr. Booton?
Yes.
Mr. O'Hair?
Yes.
And the third item in my report is a request for approval for travel outside of the New England states. It would be for what I anticipate to be between 15 and 30 teachers and administrators to attend a Professional Learning Communities at Work Institute in Syracuse, New York. As you know, our school improvement plan and, as well as the superintendent's goals, include items around trying to improve or to evolve as a professional learning culture at the school. I have been to two of these in the past. I can attest that they're of very high quality. We purposely selected a conference that's during the summer, so that we're not taking away from time teaching the kids, as well as picking the one that's closest to home here, so that we wouldn't have to have any airfare, we'd be able to travel back and forth with the schools to try and keep the costs down as much as we could. So, I'd be looking for your approval for that.
Motion by Mr., seconded by Mr. Tatsias.
Mr. Lemay?
Yes.
Mr. Moran?
Yes.
Mr. Tatsias?
Yes.
Mr. Tully?
Yes.
Mr. Bahu?
Yes.
Mr. Espinola?
Yes.
Mr. Booton?
Yes.
Mr. O'Hair?
Yes.
Also, in your packet, you have a copy of the 2014-15 Teacher Handbook that we're looking for approval on. It has been entirely revamped, so we were not able to give you the red-line copy to show you the changes, because it has entirely been revamped. The reason it was not approved prior to the beginning of the year was because there was a previous issue around unfair labor practice of the previous handbook. So, Jill, my assistant, Jill Davis, as well as Cheryl Bommel, and a group of administrators and teachers have been working on a new handbook that they're in total agreement, that it's, it does not violate the bargaining unit agreement. So, that's why we're bringing it to you now. The date is coming up for the unfair labor practice to be heard in court, so we wanted to get it resolved prior to, I think it's March 27th. So, so that's why we're bringing it to you now. We'll obviously be bringing you another one next year with some, a few minor changes for next year. That'll be brought over the summer, so you can approve it, you know, approve it for next year. So, that's the history.
Motion for approval. Seconded by Mr. Tully, seconded by Mr. Bahu.
Can I make a couple of comments?
Sure.
On the cancellation of class and the delayed opening? I haven't remembered a delayed opening in a long time. Is that something we're going to shoot far in the future?
I can, I can answer that. The delayed openings create a unique situation here, because if, the history is that if Lowell, if the city of Lowell isn't also doing a delayed opening, if the kids are out in Lowell and we try to do a delay, that our attendance would be very, very low. A lot of kids would stay home for different reasons. So, we tend to follow, for the most part, what the city of Lowell does. So, and they, I do not believe, have delayed openings very often, so. Yeah, yeah, so.
There's a move afoot for them to start doing delayed openings, especially when you have a case of just a fro, a freeze, and they can get out and treat the roads, so. If it's something we're gonna do. The other question I had on it is, you have down here that you'll have it on these channels, but with technology today, I know you have a Twitter account, and that's how I usually find out when schools closed, and Assistant Superintendent Davis will send out emails, too. Is that something that can be incorporated into next year?
Sure, into next year's.
I don't, I thought we're gonna have any.
Yeah, we do, we do a robo.
I'd like to see a school Twitter account, because that seems like most of the kids have that. I'd rather get that than a 4:30 call in the morning.
Yeah, we can, we can, we can work on that.
A Twitter account should be, I mean, that's the wave of the future, and an email. Oh, I'm saying in addition to.
In addition to.
In addition to, that you still have to do your TV stations, your radio, but I'm not sure Twitter or email, it takes a ton of extra work. Kind of a quick, easy thing to do. We do, but it's not in the, about the delayed opening. I'm just saying, putting it in there for next year. You, you know, 10, 15 years from now, they'll be asking, why don't they have a Twitter? So, what's that? No, a couple more pages. Just a small, while I'm figuring my next question, the fact that biology, you can watch a video instead of actually dissecting, thank you, I'm sure a lot of students appreciate that. My next one is on page 73 for the harassment policy that we have. We experience a unique situation here, and should something come up with the superintendent, much of this goes to the superintendent involved. In other portions, the previous pages, different discrimination, sexual harassment, things like that, it goes to the school committee. This is the only section that I saw that if there's a problem with the harassment process, that it doesn't also add that it goes to the, to the school committee.
What pages?
I'm on page 73.
72 and 73.
Yeah.
Specific paragraph?
Oh, I'm sorry, step six, yes.
Step six.
Under step six, in previous pages, it recommends that if the superintendent were to be involved, then it would go to the school committee. There's multiple parts where the superintendent appoints somebody as a third party, but if the superintendent was the focus of the investigation, then they shouldn't be making the decision of who an impartial person was. So, I would think you would.
That was in the bullying policy, this is the sexual harassment.
Correct, you have it in the bullying policy that if the superintendent was bullying me, it would be taken from him and it could go to the school committee. But for the harassment portion, there's no circuit breaker, for lack of a better word, that if the superintendent was harassing me, I couldn't go to the school committee. There's no mechanism to do that, and I think that wording should be in there.
You said page 73?
73, step six.
With Mrs. Tierney?
Okay.
Yeah, we can look at what we need to adjust. I mean, I understand the point is that if the superintendent is the last step in the process, but it's the superintendent's being charged with harassment, then the superintendent can't be the last step in the process that we need to. In the event that the superintendent is charged with harassment, it needs to be deferred to the school committee, right?
As you did in the other policy, the previous pages.
I wrote the other policy, I didn't write this one. That's right, okay.
Okay, so we'll look at fixing that for next year as well.
I am good, thank you very much.
Let me just pick up on one, did anybody else have anything to say on this? Okay, let me just pick up on one other, and that's on page 58, athletics, extracurricular and co-curricular activities. Everything is written correctly in there, however, there's really no reference to athletics, even though it talks about athletics, extracurricular and co-curricular. I think there's one little piece in there about having lifeguards at pools, but other than that, nothing really. So, maybe that can.
I think on page 80 in the handbook lists the clubs, organizations and committees. Also about eligibility for athletics is in the handbook. This is for teachers, not for students, so.
But I think Georgia's point is that maybe that should just say extracurricular and co-curricular activities, because there's nothing in the section about athletics, Jill.
Okay.
On 58, so it's just a clerical issue.
Okay, however, if you, if you reference page 80 in the student handbook, it does bring them to the list of athletic activities.
We should make it.
Clear?
Consistent.
Okay.
Well, one says that the other should say it also.
Here it says, see page 80.
That's too much work, you know?
Okay, I can take out athletics.
I don't see page 80.
No, it's in the student handbook. It's in the student handbook.
References and others.
I didn't want, what we didn't want to do is duplicate a student handbook for teachers, so it was just a reference to page 80 in the student handbook.
Then maybe Mr. O'Hair's point, putting that under eligibility.
Make them.
You've got list of clubs, organizations and committees, you should have somewhere athletics to show that. You have athletics as the header.
Mm-hmm.
I understand what you're saying.
Okay, I'll add athletics in there somehow.
Yeah, we could either take athletics off or add an athletics section and describe the eligibility and whatnot.
Yeah, I'm almost surprised, I'll need to double check that.
We'll do, we'll make those changes for the one.
I know it's new and, I mean, very thorough.
Yeah.
Nice job.
Jill and the team did a.
Yeah, can I just acknowledge some of those people since it was Cheryl Bommel, Mr. Costa, Mrs. Griffin, Maureen Griffin, Cheryl King and Debbie Legasi, who was the team who.
They've been working on this, you know, since the beginning of the school year, actually. Yeah, so.
Kudos.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, on the motion to approve the teacher handbook, approval of the teacher handbook.
It was made by Mr. Tully.
Okay, roll call.
Mr. Lemay?
Yes.
Mr. Warren?
Yes.
Mr. Tatsias?
Yes.
Mr. Tully?
Yes.
Mr. Bahu?
Yes.
Mr. Espinola?
Yes.
Mr. Booton?
Yes.
Mr. O'Hair?
Yes. Before we move on to the next item, just one thing, and I heard a couple of school committee mentioned the same thing, on a call-around, you don't get that, like a snow day. I don't get it either, you know?
So, Mr. Booton gets it because he has a son that goes to school here.
I know, but it.
If you want to be added to the robo-call, listen to the end of a 5 o'clock wake-up call, we'd be more than happy to do that.
You can take mine.
You want to take it off, okay, fine.
When I retired, I kept getting those calls.
I have to turn on City Lights every day to find out what goes on.
The next item is the school committee meeting schedule for next year. As you recall, last year, we did the school calendar first, and you did your meeting schedule later, and we ended up with some conflicts that we had a parent-teacher night on a night that we had school committee. So, in order to help us avoid those conflicts, if we approve the school committee meeting schedule now, we'll make sure that when the calendar comes out, there aren't any conflicts.
Move to approve. Motion by Mr. Bahu to approve, seconded by Mr. Espinola, is it?
Yep. And the cooperative education report is in the packet? Oh, I'm sorry.
Mr. Lemay?
Yes.
Mr. Warren?
Yes.
Mr. Tatsias?
Yes.
Mr. Tully?
Yes.
Mr. Bahu?
Yes.
Mr. Espinola?
Yes.
Mr. Booton?
Yes.
Mr. O'Hair?
Yes. Excuse me, on the school committee meeting calendar, and they should know also that no school, usually there's no meeting. All right, that's.
If it falls on a school vacation week, there's no meeting.
We don't, there's none on school vacation.
All right?
You're saying a snow day, there's no meeting?
Yeah, normally, normally they don't have a meeting on the same day.
So, we did, I mean, as you know, we had a pretty difficult year with snow, and I think what I'd like to do is, I mean, if the snowstorm's in the morning and we don't have school and everything's clear later, we have an opportunity to have a meeting because we're gonna have to reschedule the meeting, you know, for the next day or the next week. So, I think we would, you know, maybe be best to just do it on an individual, case by case. Obviously, if the storm hits in the afternoon, we're not gonna be able to have a meeting, it's not safe. But a lot of the storms, a lot of the days we didn't have school, it was because the roads weren't clear in the morning and it was unsafe for kids to get to buses, but there was no problem coming in, so. I think if there's an opportunity to still have a meeting and we can poll the members, then that's great. If not, we need to poll the members and find out when the rescheduled date's gonna be.
I agree. The open meeting law, it says 72 hours notice, so if we do cancel a meeting, we'll have to go ahead and reschedule and put a follow-up week.
See, just case by case.
On my first year elected here, I wasn't aware of that. I came to the meeting.
That comes up quite, quite a bit, and unfortunately, a lot of times, you know, once that snow goes by and the roads get clear in the afternoon, it's fine, and, you know, you wonder why we couldn't have a meeting. All right.
So, let's go.
Okay. Cooperative education report, we're at 34% for the month of February. That's tracking compared to last year was only 28%, so we're still holding our own. We were a little high earlier in the year. The winter, we tend to trend down a little bit, a lot of the construction programs and whatnot slow down, and then it picks back up in the spring, and from what Stacy's been telling me, Bazanson, March is looking to be a really good month, so we'll be trending back up. We finished last year at 31%, so we're still doing well. And the next item is the FY '16 budget presentation. Okay, I'm gonna probably, I gotta, I have to be able to see the screen. Georgia's gonna come up. We flipped the coin earlier and I lost, so I'm gonna do the presentation. So, this is our FY 2016 budget. We got a finance subcommittee meeting, and this has been presented at that meeting as well. So, just to revisit FY '15 a little bit and a little recap, I had just started working here, and one of the first things that we began to deal with was a pretty tough budget year, and we were able to get through it, but last year, we were looking at, at this time, operating costs that were escalating four times the rate of revenue growth. We needed to find reductions, almost a million dollars last year. That included staffing salaries reduced by 722,000, 14 positions, nine full-time and five part-time, and other reductions for a total of 227. So, we balanced the budget, we were fortunate to be able to do most of that staffing, I think all but two through attrition. So, we got through, we got through the budget process, but it was very difficult. The assessment reductions last year, just to revisit that, we revised the budget in August, and we tried to help out our cities and towns, member communities, because the legislature had appropriated additional money in transportation, and George, once the debt service was adjusted, the rate was actually lower than previously projected, and there was a one-time premium fee that we could apply to reduce the debt service assessment. So, in all, we reduced the assessments in August by 583,000, and the town breakdowns are right there, Eric got 121 back, Dunstable got 414, went back to Lowell and Tinsburg at 38. Unfortunately, a little bit later in the year, this year, the governor, before he left office, instituted some 9C cuts, and we lost that 306,000 that we had already given back. So, created a little bit of a hardship in this year, but that's just a recap of what happened last year. Our challenge this year, last year's challenge was obviously to close that budget gap, while at the same time, we didn't want the kids to feel like anything had changed here, and I think we accomplished that. The kids didn't know that anything had happened. This year, it's more about predictability and sustainability. It's, you know, being able to manage the budget so that we don't have the crisis. Predictability through enrollment numbers, predictability through where we're gonna find the offsets in advance of having to make drastic cuts. So, in order to, just to, so we want to ensure our mission, ensure students readiness for career in college and citizenship in the 21st century. You just saw a bunch of students here that exemplify that, so you saw firsthand what we're trying to do. Budgetarily, that means that we want to maintain our status as a Level 1 school. Our graduate, our graduation rate is 7.3% higher than the state average. Our students with disabilities graduate at an 18.7% higher rate than the state. Dropout rates three times lower than the state. Our retention rate is half the state average, and last year, 31% of our graduates were employed on co-op. So, those are the things that are really, you know, huge success indicators. We want to make sure that we're supporting the good things that we do here so that we continue to build on, on that success moving forward. Revenue sources, we get our revenue from Chapter 70 State Aid, Chapter 70 local minimum required contributions. We can use the, we use a little bit of the district's excess E and D, excess and deficiency reserve, and our transportation assessments, as well as our capital debt service assessments per regional agreement. Operating budget calculation for this year for FY '16, we only got an increase of Chapter 70 State Aid of 43,900, that's 0.2%, 0.2%. And there's, you know, there's some reasons for that. The required contribution, however, went up 4.2%, went up to 456 from our member communities. Acquired net school spending went up by 500,000, and we've reduced what we put in for, with our E and D account by 75. Last year, we put in 375, this year, we're supplementing it with 300,000. So, the operating budget went up a total of 425,679, which is a 1.2% increase over last year. So, the preliminary budget, the operating piece, looks like this, 1.2% increase. Transportation went up 69,000, and debt service went up only 48,897. So, we had a 4% increase to transportation, a 6.2% increase to debt service. The overall budget went up 1.4%. The budget process, the cluster chairs submit their requests. Draft budget is developed, reviewed and revised through a series of meetings with the business manager, administrators and myself. The proposed budget then is approved by the finance subcommittee, which took place a couple of weeks ago. We're gonna be looking tonight for their recommendation and a vote by you. There'll be a public hearing on March 26th, 6:00 PM here, on the budget. It'll, oh, I'm sorry, it'll then be approved by you on the 26th after the public hearing, and then followed by approval by the members of the district. Operating budget revenue went up 1.2%. As I mentioned before, Chapter 78 went up 43,900, minimum contribution 456, a little a slight. in advance of having to make drastic cuts. So in order to, just to, so we want to ensure our mission, ensure students' readiness for career in college and citizenship in the 21st century. You just saw a bunch of students here that exemplify that. So you saw firsthand what we're trying to do. Budgetarily, that means that we want to maintain our status as a Level One school. Our graduate, our graduation rate is 7.3% higher than the state average. Our students with disabilities graduated at an 18.7% higher rate than the state. Our dropout rate's three times lower than the state. Our retention rate is half the state average. And last year, 31% of our graduates were employed on co-op. So those are the things that are really, you know, huge success indicators. We want to make sure that we're supporting the good things that we do here so that we continue to build on that success moving forward. Revenue sources, we get our revenue from Chapter 70 state aid. Chapter 70 local minimum required contributions. We can use the, we use a little bit of the district's excess E and D, excess and deficiency reserve, and our transportation assessments, as well as our capital debt service assessments per regional agreement. Operating budget calculation for this year for FY '16. We only got an increase of Chapter 70 state aid of 43,900. That's 0.2%, 0.2%. And there's, you know, there's some reasons for that. The required contribution, however, went up 4.2%. Went up to 456 from our member communities. Required net school spending went up by 500,000. And we've reduced what we put in for, with our E and D account by 75. Last year, we put in 375. This year, we're supplementing it with 300,000. So the operating budget went up a total of 425,679, which is a 1.2% increase over last year. So the preliminary budget, the operating piece, looks like this, 1.2% increase. Transportation went up 69,000, and debt service went up only 48,97. So we had a 4% increase to transportation, a 6.2% increase to debt service. The overall budget went up 1.4%. The budget process, the cluster chairs submit their requests. Draft budget is developed, reviewed and revised through a series of meetings with the business manager, administrators, and myself. The proposed budget then is approved by the finance subcommittee, which took place a couple weeks ago. We're going to be looking tonight for their recommendation and a vote by you. There'll be a public hearing on March 26th, at 6:00 PM here, on the budget. It'll, oh, I'm sorry. It'll then be approved by you on the 26th, after the public hearing, and then followed by approval by the members of the district. Operating budget revenue went up 1.2%. As I mentioned before, Chapter 78 went up 43,900. Minimum contribution, 456. A slight decrease in E and D, and that's the 425,679. The expenses also increased by 1.2%. Salaries went up just under 500,000. Benefits were reduced by a quarter of a million. And I'll give you a little more background on that on the next slide. And other line item areas went up 183. So that's the 1.2%, so we have a balance budget revenue and operating expenses. So when we look at the benefits cost savings, because that account went down 250,590, there was an increase of 369,904, mostly to our health insurance premiums. But as you recall, in the contractual negotiations, we shifted from 8515 to 820, which resulted in a $280,000 savings. There also was a plan design change in the medics plan, going, I think, from medics III to medics II, which saved us 243,000. And then there were some other adjustments of 97,000, which, when you net that out between the increase and the savings, the line item went down a quarter of a million dollars. Again, that's the predictability and the sustainability that we're working on, so as not to be put in the position we were in last year. So preliminary budget summary. Total budget increased by 1.4%. Operating budget increased 1.2. Transportation, 4%, capital debt, 6%. Capital debt service, we're in the second year of the construction project, so that's going to, you know, peak out probably in another year or so, and then it'll start to go down. So the enrollment from our member communities is on the slide. Drackett went down 14 students, Dunstable four, and Tinsborough four, with Lowell increasing 27. And enrollment, as you know, drives the foundation budget, Chapter 74 formula. Required minimum contribution shifts from last year. Drackett was increased by...
Mr. Bujan?
Yes?
Can I ask a question about the last slide?
Sure.
Is there a way to look to see what the other sending, what the sending communities, freshman class was this year over last year? I mean, it seems like a small trend that Lowell had more, Drackett had less, but is that something to watch for?
I can, I can look and see what the enrollments are.
Year over year, you know, Drackett dropped 14, which is 3% maybe?
Right.
You know, what was their overall eighth grade to freshman? Did they lose more than 3% of their kids?
Sure.
Or is it only for us? Same thing with Lowell. Did they have a huge increase, and now we're looking at an increase?
Yeah, and I actually did look at those numbers. I just didn't record them anywhere.
Okay.
So, you know, off the top of my head, I think Lowell went up 300 kids in their entire system.
Okay.
You know, we went up 27 in that, you know, coming into the ninth grade. So, but I can give you, I can give you that information, absolutely.
Thank you.
Absolutely. I put it together.
Mr. Superintendent?
Get it out to you.
Do you ever, I don't know what the access is right now, but do you have access to future trends in population shifts? The birth rate is always constant, all around. But that, I wonder if it's in concert with the numbers of increases and decreases, if you look at that tool to project in the future.
So what, where we're a high school?
Yeah.
A good indicator is to look at the enrollments in the sending communities in grades kindergarten through eighth. And then you'll see whether they're shifting from year to year.
Yeah.
And actually, we did a little bit of that last year when I gave you the presentation on our enrollment numbers and the waitlist and all of that. So we did a little bit of that last year, so I can, I can dust that off and update that.
Maybe then, that's not a surprise, just what you looked at, yeah.
So I think the important thing, when I talk about budget predictability and sustainability, beings that the enrollment numbers are going to drive the Chapter 70 foundation budget formula. The big number there is that, at the bottom, we went up five kids, okay? So predictability, sustainability, we're stable, okay? If there's a year that we lose 40 kids, there's going to be a big gap that we're going to have to fill when that happens. So paying attention to enrollment and trying to be stable with our enrollment is part of us being able to predict and sustain our budget each year. And the required minimum contributions went down in Dunstable and Tinsborough, went up slightly in Drackett, and there was a significant increase in Lowell. But Lowell also was absorbing the 27 extra kids too that were coming, whereas the other communities were getting a shift of less kids. And the transportation assessment, according to the regional agreements, Drackett went up 93,000, 1,000 in Dunstable, 344 again in Lowell, 20,000 in Tinsborough. So you're seeing a pretty big shift in assessment. So last year, the assessment was only 396,284. This year, you're at 855,320. But you have to factor in the fact that that 396, we gave back 306,000 that then got taken away from us. So the 855,320 includes the 306,000 that was taken away from us. So it's not, you know, the transportation account only went up 4%, 69,000. The assessments are going up a lot more than that because of the money we gave back and then lost. In the capital debt service, you know, Drackett's at 46, 6,000, Dunstable 142, and Lowell and 20,000 in Tinsborough. We shifted from 623 to 840, which is an increase of 216. But there was, George, I believe, 170,000 was that one-time bond premium that was given to us when we wanted. And we gave it, we obviously gave it back to reduce the assessments last year. So similar to the money that was taken away from, that was a one-time revenue source that we used to reduce assessments, so that's baked into this number. So if you, if you actually take the 170 off the 216, it didn't go up very much from last year. And the assessment summary, which is what I kind of just went over, was the minimum required contribution increased by 456,000, based on the Chapter 70 formula. Transportation assessments, 459,000. And again, due to the state reimbursement, the total reduction from the state was 390. 306 of it got taken away from us mid-year. But it actually reduced, the reimbursement reduced by 390 on the cherry sheets when they came through. And the capital debt service assessment increased by the 216. Again, there's the 167,526 was the one-time offset to that number that I mentioned on the previous slide. And on Thursday, March 26th, at 6 o'clock right here, we will have the public hearing and take a vote to approve the budget by the committee.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay.
And I just want to thank, I mean, George, I did all the talking, he did all the work. So the budget book that you have in front of you, when I was interviewed for this job, one of the comments I made when I was asked about the budget is that, you know, I don't, and I know the budget stuff pretty good. I don't know a school that does it better than this school does it, and that's a credit to Mr. Garabedian. So, thank you.
I like that.
Thank you, George.
In all fairness, I'd have to thank my staff, and especially my assistant, Karen Wedick, who spent hours, hours making sure this was done up right, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So I've got one other item that I'm going to be looking to, when we do go into executive session for legal counsel, I also want to update you on contract negotiations while we're in executive session. That's the last item I have. Thank you very much. Again, I apologize for the number of items. But thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, next on the agenda is the report of the business manager. Mr. Garabedian, a lot of kudos you just got, this is going to be good.
Yes. First of all, I'd like to introduce to you the partner from Melanson Heath and Company to report on the FY '14 audit. This is Cheryl Burke.
Thank you for having me here tonight to talk about your FY 2014 audit. And thank you very much, George and staff, to add to everything. They really are a very professional group and excellent to work with. I'm going to talk about some of the highlights of FY '14. There were a lot of changes. Your financial statements are starting to look a lot more different than they have been in past years. Also going to mention how you did financially, as well as on the audit, and tell you a little bit about what's coming down the line in terms of new accounting pronouncements. So I'm going to start with the annual financial statements. First new thing to point out is in the table of contents. On the bottom section, there's something called proprietary funds. This is completely new in fiscal 2014. It's a whole new section of your audit report. Everybody have the annual financial statements? This should be one of the bound. So that's one thing to point out, and I'll talk a little bit more about that in a minute. Beyond the table of contents is the independent auditor's report. That's the page with our logo on it. On page two is where the opinion is. So this is an indicator of how the district did for the year. This is our opinion on your financial statements. It's what they call a clean or unmodified audit opinion. It says that we believe your financial statements are materially fairly stated in accordance with generally accepted accounting principles. So that's one of the first things that someone would want to look at when they're looking at an audit report. The next thing to point out is where the numbers pages start, and that would be the statement of net position on page 11. This particular page looks quite different than it has in past years. You still have the same presentation with the one column titled governmental activities, but there are all sorts of new accounts and things that have been included in fiscal '14. In the past, the governmental accounting standards have put the general fund, capital projects fund, and all your revolving funds and grant funds into this one column titled governmental activities. In fiscal '14, as I mentioned, you have a proprietary fund. It's a self-insured dental fund, so that's now included in this. Other changes that happened in 2014, actually, I should step back and just say that the working fund deposit, under the non-current section, that relates to internal service fund. There's also a liability called incurred but not reported claims liability. That relates to the internal service fund, and I'll talk more about that when we come to the funds' separate pages in the financial statements. Other things to point out, you have the capital project well underway as of June 30, 2014. As a result, you have a very large figure in construction in progress going up about $10 million from the prior year, as well as bond proceeds that were received, a significant dollar amount. So now you're seeing bonds payable in the liabilities section. Couple other things just to mention real quickly on this page down the bottom, the non-current liabilities section. You'll see something titled the net OPEB obligation. A few years ago, we talked about GASB 45, the unfunded liability for other post-employment benefits, the liability that's out there for providing insurance to retirees and so forth. This is a liability that is on the books. It's going up at a significant rate. And I wanted to just make mention that, a few years ago, I think you may have asked if anybody was funding this liability, and it wasn't very common. But lately, it's starting to be very common to see regional school districts starting to set up an OPEB trust fund. Some of the bond rating agencies look at this very favorably for even if you can just set up the fund, accept the legislation, and even fund a very small amount of it. They're looking at that as a very favorable thing. Changes that are coming in the FY '15 audit, right below that net OPEB obligation line item, you're going to see another GASB liability, unfunded liability, that's going to be showing up there. That relates to the unfunded liability, your portion of the Middlesex County Retirement System liability. So GASB is trying to get all of the liabilities that are out there, all the long-term items, in here. So there is quite a bit going on with the statement of net position. On the next page is the statement of activity. This is really just the income statement. Just going to mention the net income or change in net position for the year. It was a positive $1,659,710. That's the third line up from the bottom. On page 13, so that was what they called, those two pages are what they called the government-wide or the GASB 34, long-term perspective, all the long-term assets and liabilities. On page 13 is what most school districts and most school committees focus in on. This is what they refer to as the fund basis of accounting. You see the multiple columns for the general fund, capital projects fund, and non-major governmental funds, those being your grants and revolving funds. The number that everybody focuses in on is what is commonly referred to as E and D. That would be in the general fund column, in the fund balance section, the line item, unassigned fund balance, $1,557,34. That's at about 3.6%. In Massachusetts, you all know that the limitation is 5%. I did take a look at your fund balance percentage as compared to other vocational schools in Massachusetts. The one that I work on that's closest to you in revenues is at about 3.2%. Some of the other school districts that I audit, as low as 1%. I have a small regional vocational school district that's at 4.8. So it's kind of all over, all across the board there. But that's, that's, 3.6 is a pretty good amount to have. You don't want to be too low, because that could cause a lot of problems. Another very positive thing to point out about this balance sheet is in the non-major governmental fund section. If you see down the fund balance section on the restricted line, $1,227,325. What that represents is your grants and revolving funds balance. From time to time, because a lot of your grants are on a reimbursement basis, you expend before you request the money, what we'll see on financial statements is that certain funds will be in a deficit. And those can get out of hand quite a bit. Really would like to commend the district for keeping a close watch on that. Those would be shown separately on the unassigned line item. So those would be individual fund deficits, and they would be required to be shown there. So that's another thing that you should be looking for on that unassigned line in the other funds is deficit item. So you've done a pretty good job with that. The next page is just a reconciliation page, and on page 15 is the income statement. Again, with the three columns of funds. The third line up from the bottom is the net income for the year for each one of the funds. Your capital projects fund, you'll see a large $6,161,767 coming in. That's MSBA money. Capital acquisitions, that relates to the construction in progress, $10,297,20. And then beneath that, under the other financing sources and uses, you see proceeds of bonds, that happened in '14, $9,804. You also, if you go a little bit to the left and you look in the general fund column in that section, you'll see that bond premium that was referred to by the superintendent, as well as some bond issuance costs. So those are, those are something that was different in FY '14. And important to point out, if you look at that capital projects fund, the fund equity at the beginning of the year was in the negative $430,047, resolved with the proceeds from the bond. Page 16 is another reconciliation page. And then on page 17 is your general fund budget versus actual. This year, the presentation of the budget versus actual page is a little bit different than it has been in the past. The difference relates to the bottom section, where you have the other financing sources and uses. We are finding that it's a more understandable presentation when you separate out the use of fund balance, because it's not really an inflow of revenues during the current year. So we have kind of an intermediate to measure right there with the excess deficiency of revenues over expenditure. So you can see in your budget columns, the original and the final, that your budget for revenues is less than your expenses, the difference coming from your accumulated surplus or your E and D. Important, again, to point out, far-right column, the variance, net positive for the year, $504,737. I'm looking at the third line up from the bottom, a result of under-expending appropriations and then taking in more than you had anticipated. So that's, that's a reflection of good budgeting. Page 18, 19, and 20 are the new pages that I was talking about earlier. This refers to the new proprietary fund. The, it's called an internal service fund. It represents your self-insured dental fund. So this is the balance sheet of the statement of net position. Page 19 is the income statement related to that fund, and it is required by the accounting standards to be shown as a separate page. It's not on the fund basis. It's not on the fund basis. It's using a different method of accounting. And then page 20 is the statement of cash flows, which is a reconciliation of the change in cash in that fund for the year. On page 21, fiduciary funds, those being scholarship trust funds and student activity funds. And then on page 22, the income statement for the scholarship trust funds. On 20, page 23, you start your notes to the financial statements. If you compare your notes to the financial statements this year compared to the prior year, you'll notice that it greatly expanded as a result of the new bond issuance, the new fund. There's a lot of new disclosures in there. Any questions on the financial statements?
Just when you mentioned on page 17, it's good budgeting. It's probably more excellent management than that.
Yes, management of the budget. Good management of the budget.
When you compare, you do a lot of municipals. The school is relatively in good shape beyond the E and D.
Beyond E and D, yep, yep. I mean, when you look at these financial statements, these are the key things that you look at. And you look at the budget versus actual, how that's being managed. You look at the E and D balance. You look at the cash balance, what you have out there for debt. I, I think as, as in comparison with other school districts, you're looking pretty healthy and, and well-managed.
Thank you, Mr. Garbi.
Questions on the financials? I'll just mention very briefly, briefly that in addition to the annual financial statements that we just reviewed, there are three other reports that you probably have received, one being the A133 single audit report. That's the report on compliance with the federal compliance requirements. So all the federal funding you get, you get approximately $3 million a year in federal funds. The feds require certain programs within the $3 million to be audited. This year, we looked at the Title I program and special ed. The compliance requirements are over and above those that are related to a financial statement audit. That report was a clean report, no exceptions. So that's another indicator of how the district is doing. There is a separate governance letter, which is our required communications to you as a school committee. If you read through that, it will talk about if we had any issues during the audit, and it went very smoothly. We did not have any issues. And then the last report is something called an agreed-upon procedures report. It's essentially, it's not really an audit, but it's testing of the numbers that are in your end-of-year report against your financial information. And I believe there were some, a couple little items in there, and George has already made the amendments related to those.
Two reporting discrepancies. I had to do an amendment with the DESE. It's been done, it was done two days ago.
Very good.
A question, if I may. Can you talk a little bit, you mentioned the OPEB trust fund and that municipalities and regional school districts are beginning to fund that liability. Can you talk a little bit about, you know, what you're seeing out there and what that means?
Yeah, sure.
And how you set that fund up?
Yep, the first step would be for the school committee to, to accept the legislation. There's specific legislation about setting up or establishing an OPEB trust fund. So that would be step one. And then as far as the accounting system goes, it's a separate fund within the accounting system that gets established. The other part of it relates to the funding portion of it. So typically, what we see is as part of the annual budget of the general fund, there is a contribution to the OPEB trust fund. That's part of the budget. And that actually, when you, when you look at your financial statements, you can see it moving out of the general fund and going into this fiduciary fund, and it's shown separately, not on the same page with the general fund. Once it's out, it's out. It's in a trust fund. And it reduces, when the actuary calculates your net OPEB obligation, it reduces the liability that you're seeing on here. And that's also reflected in the footnote disclosure.
So next year's budget presentation, it may very well, I mean, right now, you're looking at an operating budget. You're looking at transportation assessment. You're looking at a capital assessment, and there'd probably be an OPEB assessment too, because that doesn't count for net school spending. So there's going to need to be another assessment in order to begin funding this, this account. Okay, good, thank you.
The, the district can set the fund up, but does your regional agreement allow you to have a third assessment? Because agreements call for capital and the operating budget. They don't mention this. Or would it, would you have to go back to the municipalities to allow, they can allow you a third budget item?
If, I mean, maybe the mechanism would be to put it in the operating budget, but the operating budget is going to be above minimum contribution in order to account for that, because it's not going to be included in net school spending, right?
But that would be.
Yeah, so if we put, yeah, so if we put $500,000 more in the operating budget, and it was designated to go into the trust fund, it would then flow rather than be a separate assessment. Okay. But it's going to, we've always, our budget has always been at minimum contribution. So I think the important thing to note is that in order to fund that OPEB trust account, we're going to have to be assessing something above minimum contribution, because it doesn't count for net school spending. If we take it out of the net school spending amount, we're not going to meet net school spending with the state. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
The, the issue that's happening over in our neighboring town, is that something your audit would pick up at Chelmsford specifically? Do you pick up that in this type of an audit? Discrepancies and things that they had?
I'm not familiar with what the situation is in Chelmsford. Is...
I'm not 100%, and I don't want to talk. Okay.
I think the answer to your, your question is, is yes, it would, but the question's whether or not the, if there were, it was a glitch or money was budgeted beyond what it should have been. They, I mean, it's going to come to light probably before it gets audited.
Okay.
Yeah. They had a budget.
I'm wondering if your audit would handle that. I didn't know if you were even familiar with the issue that they were having.
No, I'm not, I'm sorry.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. May. Very good presentation, by the way. I'm just wondering, is part of your obligation going over the pros and cons of the report to work with the business manager on weaknesses and strengths or things to pick up on?
Yep, absolutely, a very good question.
Then the business administrator would ensure and work with the superintendent? Or is this a group?
It's usually collaborative effort. And, and I neglected to mention that there is no management letter. That is, it's a big part of the audit. And in fact, almost half of the audit is not only just testing the numbers and looking at the presentation and giving the opinion on that, but testing how the information gets to the accounting system, if anybody can manipulate it. And that, that's one part of it. That's financial statement, internal controls. But there's also misappropriation of assets and, and those types of internal controls that we look at very closely. If there was anything that came to our attention that was a serious issue, we would be issuing a separate management letter to you to identify that either as a control deficiency, a significant deficiency, which is much higher, and then material weakness, which means it's, it's a very severe issue. So we did not have any of those. However, during our audit process, we always come up with recommendations and comments and areas for improvement, and we work with George. And we go through that at the conclusion of every audit in, in detail so that he can take a look at it. Sometimes we work together on solutions. Sometimes you've probably seen some changes brought from George to you to change maybe policies and things like that as a result of some of those comments.
I, I call her often too for guidance, you know? I mean, just a couple of days ago.
Yep.
How do you want me to treat this? Because the auditors are going to be the ones that have the final say when they audit, so I want to get the answer upfront.
It would appear that this, forgive me, this is my first review with this committee. But I'm familiar with audits somewhat. But is, is this the first year? Or are you do, are we, you the same group that does it year to year?
Yeah, we've been, we've been the auditors for quite a while now. Myself, I've been, I've been the partner. I've been a partner on Melant and Heath for four years now, but I have worked there since 1990. My staff, my lead auditor, Alyssa, was going to be here tonight, but she has a little one, so she's kind of a partner in training there. But she's really one of your key contract contacts as well. So she's been with us for about eight years, and she's been managing this audit and our staff pretty consistent. We do have newbies coming in once a while, but they're supervised by our audit managers.
And George, if I can defer to you as superintendent, is this an RFP process?
It was, yes, it was. Well, we went out to bid according to the school committee's wishes. Oh, this was about five years now. And prior to that, it was, you know, it was for multi-year contract.
Thank you. Excellent report, by the way.
Just one quick question. Noticing in your results and recommendations, I can only remember a few times that there were some recommendations. Not that, not that the district did anything illegally, but there could be some changes.
Improvement.
Forfill those.
Yep.
Do we fall into a category with most school districts? Or are we above that curve? You know, I would think what the results that we get from your audit puts us above the curve.
Absolutely.
Yep.
Absolutely. It is pretty rare when, when we don't have any management letter comments or A133 single audit findings. I would say you're one of the few that consistently does not have that.
Now that we thank George, we want to thank you.
That's a good reflection on you too.
I can back you up on that as well.
Very thorough.
There's always a management.
City of all time.
George, that's why you're here.
Cheryl, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
George?
Why don't we do it?
Yeah, we could.
Motion, okay. Who made the? Tully. Motion by Mr. Tully, seconded by Mr. Lemay.
Mr. Lemay?
Yes.
Mr. Moran?
Yes.
Mr. Tatius?
Yes.
Mr. Tully?
Yes.
Mr. Bahu?
Yes.
Mr. Espinola?
Yes.
Mr. Booton?
Yes.
Mr. O'Hair?
Yes. Pass it.
All right. Another item on my agenda. I just got an update on, on the fuel adjustment credits we received the past three months.
Thank you, George.
$3,500 to date, and we'll keep, we'll keep it updated. We just, we just did the audit report, so that's not an issue. I just wanted to let the, the committee know that next month, we'll be scheduling a note sale to get additional funds for the capital project. We expect to have a sale in mid, mid-April, and the paperwork will be presented at the April school committee meeting for approval. I'll have it on the agenda, yes.
What type of numbers are you looking at?
Well, we'll be going, we have $3 million in notes out there right now. They're coming up for renewal, and I'll be also grabbing another $6 million in new funds to continue the, continue the project.
How about the interest rates?
Looking 1%, we're guess, you know, estimating from our financial advisors is a...
It's a real target number?
Yeah.
Mr. Bahu took one of my questions, thank you. The projection, was it at 3% when we started doing this?
Well, this is short-term now.
Okay.
Short-term funds. The, your short-term was between 1 and 2%. You know, last year, I think we were using 2, and then it actually came in at 1, and that was part of the adjustment in the debt service assessment to the communities last year.
Great, okay, thank you.
And the last piece I had actually was, was on the OPEB subject, which Cheryl spoke about. We are, we have been working to set up this OPEB trust fund. We've submitted documents to Attorney Long to review them, and we expect, once they come back from him from review, we'd like to present them to the committee and the subcommittee to discuss it, to get something established in the near future to address the issue that was discussed. So it was just, this is kind of an FYI.
Mr. Bohner? On that, I think Mr. Tully asked the question. So, and you mentioned, Mr. Bourgeois, that it's a separate account, and then does that mean we're assessing the communities more?
Yes, it would ultimately be, because, because as Roger said, we, we only assess the minimum contribution. In order to get additional funds to, to fund a portion of this OPEB trust, it would have to be a level above that, whatever the, the committee was comfortable in establishing.
So right now, we're putting aside funds for that, but we're looking to do this into a trust.
Right now, we're not putting any funds aside for it. That's, and it's growing.
In our budget, we do.
No, no, we're not in our budget this year. It'll be, we'll be establishing this hopefully before the end of the school year, but that'll be something that will be included in next year's budget.
Next year's budget, yeah. Set the trust fund up this year at some point in time. Then it'll be established so that the operating budget would then include an OPEB line item, and it would be whatever the committee's comfortable above minimum. And that would, that would go into this, this account each year.
And as, as the auditor alluded to, I mean, cities and towns have been setting them up and funding them, albeit small. I mean, the liability that's out there, and they're only putting in a small payment, but I think it's the fact that we're recognizing, acknowledging the liability, and we're at least setting up something and at least starting to pick it, pick at it.
And I think, and I think last year, I believe Drake and Lowell both set them up and started funding them. So our, our members are setting them up and funding them themselves, and, you know, we need to do the same moving forward.
I think Mr. Bradley is an expert on that at this point. He just set it up at the LITA.
Oh, okay.
Thank you.
That's it.
That's it.
Thank you very much, Mr. Garbi.
Thank you very much, George.
Okay. Other items that we have, any discussion on these? Is this locker room?
We bypassed.
Okay, bypass all?
Yes.
Okay, move the, motion by Mr. Tully to bypass all the outstanding items, seconded by Mr. Moran.
Mr. Lemay?
Yes.
Mr. Moran?
Yes.
Mr. Tatius?
Yes.
Mr. Tully?
Yes.
Mr. Bahu?
Yes.
Mr. Espinola?
Yes.
Mr. Booton?
Yes.
Mr. O'Hair?
Yes.
Okay. New business, annual reorganization of the committee and elections of office to take effect, April 1, 2015.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Are we ready to start this?
Yep.
So moved to nominate Fred Bahu to be chairman.
Okay. Motion by Mr. Moran. Seconded by Mr.
Bahu?
He got me first.
Okay, by Mr. Okay, we're just getting the names on them right now.
For chairman?
Yeah, right now, it's for chairman.
Chairman.
Any other names for chairman?
Move nominations to be closed.
For chair?
For chair.
For chair, yes, second.
Move the nominations. So we're going to vote
Yeah.
for, for chairman, for Mr. Bahu. So if you could pass it in. Fred, if you can pass these down.
I'm going to need one, Cheryl. I'd like to vote for myself.
Yours was on the top.
Oh, my name is here? Oh, there are only three of us on this.
What early, what often?
Names have to be spelled correctly. How do you spell?
He just asked me that.
B-O-O-H-O-O.
Well, I'd want to go by legal. There's a couple of guys here that would throw me in jail. You got everything there?
No, I'm missing, they're coming.
No, I'm missing, they're coming this way.
One more over here.
We have to wait to vote, and?
Not yet.
We have to wait, to wait and see.
District wide.
I'm not counting any of them.
Funny, funny.
I've had that before.
Okay.
Mr. Bahu, congratulations, eight votes.
Oh, terrific. Thank you. Speechless week. Thank you, sir. Thank you, David.
Okay, next item is opening of nominate for vice chair.
I'd like to nominate Ray Booton as vice chair.
Motion by Mr. Tully, seconded by Mr. Lemay. Okay, same instructions.
Move that nominations be closed.
Second. Okay, roll call.
Mr. Lemay, Mr. Moran, this is to close nominations.
Yes.
Mr. Tatius, Mr. Tully?
Yes.
Mr. Bahu?
Yes.
Mr. Espinola?
Yes.
Mr. Booton?
Yes.
Mr. O'Hair?
Yes.
Okay.
Give us another thought.
Okay, good, thank you, we should clarify.
Did you hear my spelling?
Booton, like boo-hoo, boo-hoo and boo-hoo.
B-O, B-O.
Boo-hoo and a bahu.
Finally, George, finally you get it.
Oh, riot.
We're still doing the same thing, Mr. Chairman.
I gotta call one of my friends to get the great pronunciation.
Congratulations, Mr. Booton.
Thank you all very much.
Okay, we also, okay, next item here is that we're gonna, okay, nomination for secretary?
Nominate Mr. Moran.
Wait, wait, we, we have to, do we have to take a motion first? Do we do the motion?
For what?
Secretary.
That's what we're doing now?
Yeah, this is a motion. You?
He's nominating?
Mr. Moran?
Yes.
Joe Espinola?
Aye, seconded by Mr. Bahu.
Mr. Paul Moran?
Nominations be closed.
Second.
By Mr., motion by Mr. Tully, seconded by Mr. Booton.
All right, so this is, we're voting to close the nominations. Mr. Lemay?
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Moran?
Yes.
Mr. Tatius?
Yes.
Mr. Tully?
Yes.
Mr. Bahu?
Yes.
Mr. Espinola?
Yes.
Mr. Booton?
Yes.
Mr. O'Hair?
Yes.
Okay. You work well alone.
Congratulations, Mr. Moran.
Yes, and one.
Eight votes.
There you go.
Eight votes.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
That was all, that was all.
It was close. All right, you got it. Okay, we're all set with that.
Set with that.
Okay, next item on the agenda, report of subcommittee's approval of the February seventeenth naming criteria subcommittee meeting?
So.
By Mr. Lemay, seconded by Mr. Moran.
Mr. Lemay?
Yes.
Mr. Moran?
Yes.
Mr. Tatius?
Yes.
Mr. Tully?
Yes.
Mr. Bahu?
Yes.
Mr. Espinola?
Yes.
Mr. Booton?
Yes.
Mr. O'Hair?
Yes.
Motion passes, next item, approval of March ninth, financial subcommittee meeting by Mr. Moran, seconded by Mr. Tatius.
Mr. Lemay?
Yes.
Mr. Moran?
Yes.
Mr. Tatius?
Yes.
Mr. Tully?
Yes.
Mr. Bahu?
Yes.
Mr. Espinola?
Yes.
Mr. Booton?
Yes.
Mr. O'Hair?
Yes.
No change orders.
Okay, motion passes. Now we are gonna vote to go into executive session.
Excuse me, Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
We have to approve the change order we just approved in the building?
Yes. We will.
Yeah, we did.
Okay, sorry?
I forgot that one.
There was a change order that was approved at the subcommittee.
I forgot that one.
I, I have.
Okay.
You have it?
Approval of the motion from the building subcommittee meeting?
Of eight hundred and thirty-five, eight hundred and thirty-four thousand five hundred and fifty-seven dollars for our building project and change orders.
Okay, motion by Mr. Bahu, seconded by Mr. Tatius.
Mr. Lemay?
Yes.
Mr. Moran?
Yes.
Mr. Tatius?
Yes.
Mr. Tully?
Yes.
Mr. Bahu?
Yes.
Mr. Espinola?
Yes.
Mr. Booton?
Yes.
Mr. O'Hair?
Yes.
Motion passes. Okay, now we want to go into executive session.
A food on potential litigation.
Or an update on potential?
Contract negotiations.
Separate.
Okay, separate votes.
Litigation. Okay, motion.
Is there a vote after?
Oh, uh.
Will there possibly be a vote after?
It could be.
Could be, okay.
But that's after.
I think we want to have a roll call first, right?
We gotta make a motion.
No, all right, Mr. Booton made the motion, seconded by Mr. Moran, okay, roll call.
Mr. Lemay?
Yes.
Mr. Moran?
Yes.
Mr. Tatius?
Yes.
Mr. Tully?
Yes.
Mr. Bahu?
Yes.
Mr. Espinola?
Yes.
Mr. Booton?
Yes.
Mr. O'Hair?
Yes.
Okay, motion to go into executive session for a contract, update on contract negotiations by Mr. Tully, seconded by Mr. Tatius.
Mr. Lemay?
Yes.
Mr. Moran?
Yes.
Mr. Tatius?
Yes.
Mr. Tully?
Yes.
Mr. Bahu?
Yes.
Mr. Espinola?
Yes.
Mr. Booton?
Yes.
Mr. O'Hair?
Yes.
Will there be votes after?
Possibly, okay. Okay, we'll take a four-minute recess.